Commissioner Powell to say a prayer, we're gonna open back up to Commissioner's court.
Lord, we're thankful today for health and strength.
Yeah.
We are thankful today, Lord God, to be given the opportunity to serve this county.
Yeah.
We ask you, Lord, to touch our minds and touch our hearts. Help us today, God, to do what is right in your eyes. We trust and believe in you, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Alright, I'll call the meeting to order if we do have a forum. We just had a public hearing, so. I'm gonna go right into the consent agenda. Take care on the minutes from the previous meetings. Okay. Alright. I'm not gonna read through every, we don't have any statement of votes. We did receive all the monthly departmental reports. So. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Alright, motion made by me, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Right.
I'm sorry, Commissioner White, my left side here. All in favor? All against? Alright. Item number one, which was conduct public hearing, we went ahead, we did that on, at eight o'clock.
This, the earlier one was about the tax rate, this is for the budget.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. So, I thought we done had it, but, uh, conduct public hearing on proposed 2025 Newton County budgets. And that's me, we do have the Newton County budget here. On the budget, uh, from the taxpayers. On the. On the de minimis rate, uh, the county will receive eight million, three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. So. Hey, I was looking at.
We are looking at current property taxes. Current property taxes.
Oh, current property taxes, okay, I just went to the bottom line. Uh, is eight million, eighteen dollars, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Apologize for that. Alright. Go down here to the. General fund. Have you have that line marked for the general fund?
Um, what we're gonna do is the total revenue for with all the added fees, fines, and other revenue. Is going to be a total of. Nine million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
Thank you for having the flip through.
Did you find it?
Yeah. Nine million.
Okay.
Keep going. Yeah.
Alright, the total revenue, uh, like Ms. Sherry said, the, uh. On all the counties receivable, we will have nine million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. So. What's the bottom line on our budget here?
On the bottom line, on the expenditures?
Yes.
Uh, expenditures were nine million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents. With a twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. That was, that is with a hundred and twenty thousand in company.
And we've budgeted a hundred thousand for the radio tower in Dewville for sheriff department. I don't know if everybody's aware of the, uh. The tower in Dewville belongs to the Salina River Authority and it's been condemned, so they're tearing it down in January. So sheriff department has, uh, no handheld communication. A lot of their communication in South County is on cell phone. So we're proposing to, uh, build a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radio tower. So South County deputies and fire departments can reach the. Breaker.
You can close the public hearing?
Hmm?
So.
Yes.
Close the public hearing if there's no questions or feedback.
Okay, I was giving everybody a chance to look over, look over the budget, uh, to make sure there was no question.
But this handout that we got here, it does not include part-time. Uh, it's not coming. It doesn't have my part-time on it. Hey, what is, what is this document for, is this just a?
The public official, elected official salary.
Okay, so the other salaries on it are, not that they're not important.
Yeah, they will, they will be added when the budget documents are completed, they, all, everything, I had given her a sheet, she probably just didn't list them.
Okay.
Because it was.
That's the only thing I see is left off, it's a part-time.
Yes.
Part-time and temporary, okay.
Does it have? Well, it says district attorney, a hundred and five thousand, yeah, that's, it's more like three thousand.
Yeah, the county. It is.
Is yours, is your, it's a family, let me see it, I'll get it, I don't think it's something.
Says a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
The county's three thousand. Yeah, the county only pays three thousand.
Three thousand, I want to say four hundred and something.
I've not seen.
And on the assistant DA, we don't pay. Uh, we just pay.
Assistant DA is not an elected official. It's the elected officials of the county.
Oh. Is it right in the budget?
Yes.
Yes, we have, I want to say it's three thou. Wait, what's your? It's, I've seen so many numbers in the last couple of days. Cross eyes.
Courtney's salary as far as elected official for Courtney is three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay. What'd you say, thirty, thirty-five, forty-five, fifty? Thirty. Oh, she said thirty-seven, thirty-five, forty-seven, fifty.
Three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars.
Say that number goodbye.
Just so that I understand about budget, um, again, taxpayer. Highlighting all the. All the, uh, posed increases, what I heard earlier is. No. No increases, the salary increases, so what I'm understanding is will be adjusted out. Posted online, will be very different from all these green highlights that I've got. Uh, for salary increases and all of that, that'll all be corrected, but online.
Yes. Would you pay up, the adopted budget will, after it is adopted here, okay.
So, but, but just for clarity, there will be pay increases in twenty-five, in the DA's office and in sheriff.
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, I just want it to be known that there will be pay increases, today we can't just say there will be no pay increases.
Yes.
There will be pay increases.
Raises for the offices. I didn't mean to cause confusion there.
So I'm just clarifying, there will be no pay raises paid forward tax fund.
Yes, I didn't mean to cause confusion there, because I've heard man.
I'm not confused, I just was.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cause. I was man.
Yeah, the commissioners as well, my, your people have raises. The commissioners.
Yes. There's a lot of difference that's been talked, talked about today, it's gone here. Now I'm just trying to understand. We were gonna see online, it's all passing.
Commissioners, there's, so decent.
You don't mind? I just give my chance, go to everyone. I didn't want to throw it out there, but. Now, on the budget that we talked about, does anybody have any comments they want to make? Or. Or say anything? I'm giving Commissioner White, uh, Commissioner Benson a chance to go over, uh, the budget. I had one over to my boss, I promise.
Okay, please.
Consent. There is a, I would appreciate.
We need to change this document for salaries. We need to go change it, assign one. Gonna be. They're done with the more.
You're what?
Adoptment, I gave you that, I changed all that. That was adopted, that's my guy, I'm simple.
This was published. It would pay for, it would pull the official salaries.
No, the ones that were at the, at that time, the reprimanded proposals for the salaries, those can put in the three percent.
So, that's.
They're whatever.
We can go below what we keep over.
So. For the salaries, the, the, the change.
So.
Thirty-four.
I need. Yeah. Uh, look, wait, no.
Okay. Alright, if there's no comments, uh. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five, uh, proposed budget. Uh, item number two is we'll set the twenty-twenty-five salary expenses and other allowances of elected county and precinct office. Alright, uh. Okay. Basically, there's no change as from last year, uh, with the addition of a travel allowance or. Uh, sure.
So I do have a question about this, it just come to me. Uh, Ms. Moore. You show me a, a document from the district judges relating to your office.
Yes, I talked to the district judges and. Device, because it was included with a three percent salary increase and a first teenager, and but all that has been since discussed and rejected. And so I talked with both the district judges and we're gonna go to court next week and hear another. Gonna be to reflect the change.
Right, go back and hold it.
Yes. Incorrect. I mean, the first, they told me, what I was directed, they told me to put it in the budget as it should be. And then we'll go back and make it lower. Because it's gonna be lower than what. Was first intention, what was, you know, presented to the office. In our hearing. Yeah, I spoke with Courtney about it.
Okay.
And I talked to both the judges.
What should add in this document here?
What, what document?
Your, your document, you have the audit. You have the audit.
It's not on there because the court is not perusing my salary, the district judges.
Okay, so. I'll make the motion that we approve the two thousand and twenty-five salary for elected officials. With the correction that the district attorney has paid three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents by Newton County. The rest of her salary is made up by state stuff.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, forty-five?
Forty-five.
Alright, let me correct that, thirty-five. You get that, Mr. Horton? This lot. So I made the motion that we approve the salaries for elected officials with the correction of the district attorney being three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Oh, second. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against? Alright. Item number three, consider, take record, vote, and adopt twenty-twenty-five Newton County budget. So. Um, this is our budget for twenty-twenty-five, so need to take a vote to adopt the budget.
Record vote.
Yes, but we have to say her name. So. So I'm gonna take, I'm gonna start out, uh. I, Ronnie Cochran, county judge. Vote to adopt. The budget that we have in front of us.
Is that your motion?
Yes. I, how should I word it?
Next motion.
Okay, uh. I'll make a motion that we adopt the twenty-twenty-five, uh, proposed budget that we have in front of us. Now.
Second motion.
Alright, motions, then second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Well, you guys have a record.
Yeah, it's gotta be a record.
Alright, then, uh, Commissioner Benson, how do you vote?
Uh, both yes.
Commissioner White, how do you vote?
Both yes.
County judge votes yes. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote, vote no? Okay. Alright. Alright, item number four. If the adopted twenty-twenty-five Newton County budget will require raising more revenue from property taxes, uh, than the previous year. Consider and ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. So. I am proposing we go with the, uh, de minimis rate. Which is point seven zero zero nine two six, uh, for a hundred dollar value.
Four, five together or?
Judge, you need to read this, please.
Okay. Alright, this budget, uh, Newton County fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by the amount of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Which is a five point seven five percent increase from last year's budget. Uh, the property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is sixty-seven thousand, uh, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So. Um. So we need to take a vote on the proposed tax rate. Of point seven zero zero nine two six for a hundred dollar value, which is the de minimis rate.
But Judge, uh, procedurally, you have to have an action item first to vote that you are gonna increase, that you're gonna go with an increased tax rate. So on number four, it's a separate vote required than action setting the tax rate.
Okay.
So two separate votes there on four and five.
So. Have to have an action item, uh, two?
You need to ratify the property tax increase that's reflected in the budget.
Okay.
It's a separate item. But I've never seen you, never had to see it.
Yeah.
Eleven years, so, but yes, sir, it's a separate item, it's in number five.
Okay, so, yeah, this is my first time on this, so. So I need a motion to, uh, ratify the. Increase.
Retax increase, yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'm gonna try to word this, I need a motion to, uh, ratify the increase in the property tax revenue, uh, from last year's budget of. Five hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Okay, is this a record vote too? Okay.
I make the motion.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Benson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against?
Ah.
So. Go down. To item number five. Consider, item number five is consider, take record vote, and adopt the twenty-twenty-four tax rate. So again, I'm proposing the, the rate that's called the de minimis rate, uh, at a rate of point seven zero. Zero nine two six for a hundred dollar value.
Promotion, Judge, are you?
I just read the, uh. I just read the, uh, item on the.
On number five, it has to, um, it stays to take record vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. That goes good. You got, you got a motion first.
I have a motion or a second yet.
I'll make the motion that we, uh. Take a record vote to adopt the twenty-twenty-four tax rate.
At what rate?
Okay.
It is, yeah.
I make the motion that we accept the, uh, tax rate, adopt the twenty-twenty-four tax rate of point. Seven zero zero nine two six for a hundred thousand dollars. I will second, uh, Commissioner White's motion. Alright, uh. Commissioner White made the motion, I second, all in favor?
Record.
Yes, we are ready, Judge.
I know, but we, we got, okay. Alright, record vote, Commissioner Benson, huh?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Uh, county judge, yes. Commissioner Powell?
No.
Alright. Moving on to item number six. Selection of request for bids for all types of road materials, culverts, bridge materials, crack fuel, oil, and hauling for road bridges.
Every year we go out for our annual road bridge and fuel, um, bids, and this year we receive suncoast resources and field over for fuel. Uh, Morgan, Streetfella, Courtney, and I are on the bidding committee and we chose both of them. Um, also for the materials, road and bridge materials, we received bids from Jack Alexandra, Atoya Rock, and Texas Materials. We also chose all three of them, those are the three that we use, um, for the different precincts. We used them, and that's the only bids we've received, we've reached out to, we were vendors, and this is all.
We didn't give that one, approve.
It's all we received in house.
So, question on that, so. If a commissioner, like where I live, I have mineral tech, you know, literally right in the heart of my precinct. And I get field sand for six dollars to go hard, you know, it's just ridiculously cheap and I.
You still, all you have to do is follow the procurement policy.
As long as we follow our procurement policy.
You continue, follow the procurement policy.
And hopefully some creation field.
How do you prepare?
Yes.
It's not here or all free.
And Louisiana's people roll my white rock.
But none of them submitted a bid to be an, I mean, for the annual.
But that's just.
Benders.
If we use them for project work.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they, they have to do this if they're gonna be part of a grant.
Yes.
But on a daily activity, if we choose to.
You're a policy that Newton County has in place.
Okay.
I could bid to.
Yes. Can I get a motion for?
I make that motion that we accept for deal bids, it's, it's, for fuel, definitely for true.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Benson.
I second motion, Judge.
Second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? Alright. Item number seven. Selection.
We're going.
Selection of request for bids for RFP twenty-twenty-four dash ten for the resurfacing of Kent Road forty-one eighty-one, uh, Commissioner Powell?
So this is the second time we went out for bids on this road. And unfortunately, for the second time, um, this is the only bid we received. Uh, I mentioned this last week, Mr. Sharp's radio show, this is something that the commissioners are up against, you know, it's, uh. So, the bid is, is more than what I would like, so I'm asking the court that we just take no action on this. And, uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get with Commissioner Hopps, Commissioner Lek Hopson, and one of the other two commissioners, so we don't have an illegal forum. We're gonna scratch our heads and see if we can come up with something to resurface this road that's suitable. So, I, I'm, I'm asking that we take no motion on it.
Alright. Second that vote. Alright, all in favor? All against? All right. Item number eight is to extend the Hurricane Laura disaster declaration until October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And then we got item number nine is extend the COVID nineteen disaster declaration until October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, we'll look these two together. Uh. I'll make a motion that we extend the Hurricane Laura disaster declaration and the COVID nineteen disaster declaration until October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
I second.
All right, I made a motion, Commissioner Benson second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
All against? All right. Item number ten, discuss and consider placing a monthly operating spending limit of fifteen thousand excluding payroll on outgoing commission. This limit should not exceed, should not, could not be exceeded with a majority vote approval of Commissioners' Court per Texas Government Code one thirty dot nine oh eight.
So, so Judge, on this one, that second sentence, uh, it should say this limit could not be exceeded without a majority vote approved by Commissioners' Court. So, basically, what this is, is, um, this, you know, we've had all this discussion about POs and trust issues and, you know, bills showing up late. Um, this would just, in my opinion, it would add confidence to the general public that, you know, the commissioners basically have control of a large sum of money. Um, that, uh. We can spend that wheel without a PO system, I mean, we can spend up to fifty thousand dollars pretty easily, so I'm just asking that we. Pass this resolution that would be on me and all of the court going forward, that if we get ready to spend more than fifteen thousand, we just bring it to court, put it in front of the court, get it voted on. Just, to me, it's just a confidence builder that nobody's doing anything other than what they should be doing. And I'm not insinuating anybody would, I think it's, like I said, I think it's just the right thing to do.
Commissioners, are you thinking for the, uh, all elected officials?
So, I've.
That is the language.
So, so we did talk about that, the person that I talked with about this being you. Because I asked, and I asked the county attorneys also about this, I felt like it's good to start within our own house. And then, if the commissioners support this, then maybe we visit all the elected offices, you know, that handle, it's, it's not suitable for like, say, the tax assessor collector. Their budget is not big, they don't go out and make a lot of purchases without coming to court, because their budget don't allow, our budgets allow us to spend a lot of money. Uh, I'm sure the sheriff can do the same thing, so we may visit other offices in the future, but first we got to start with our own, if, if court even wants to do this, it may be something that the court feels is not necessary, I. I don't know if that answered your question, but I'd say let's start with us and then go from there.
All right, uh. I'll make a motion that we, uh, court considered placing a monthly operating spending limit of fifteen thousand excluding payroll. On outgoing permit commissioners, and, uh, this limit. Could be extended, cannot be extended without a majority vote approval of Commissioners' Court.
I second the motion.
All right, I made a motion, uh, Commissioner Powell second, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh. All against?
Hey.
So. Abstaining from voting? Okay, uh. Commissioner White has abstained from voting. So, this motion failed.
I pass majority.
Oh, damn. Hold him. Hold on.
I asked two to one.
Okay, so we had to have three, so, yeah. Okay. All right, uh. Item number eleven, budget amendments. All right, and payment of bill, Commissioner White.
Two hundred and five, one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Road and Bridge General, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Road and Bridge Precinct one, fifteen thousand, twenty-two dollars. Road and Bridge Precinct two, fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Road and Bridge Precinct four, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. BAW grants, uh, one hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. Commission special precinct one, one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one cent. Commissioner special precinct two, eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Commissioner special precinct three, fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents. Commissioner special precinct four, two thousand, fifty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Record preservation, one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents. Land of the road precinct three, two thousand, four hundred and two dollars and forty cents. Solid waste disposal, nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Voter registration, nine hundred and nine dollars and five cents. Newton County Library, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and three cents. Historical operating, two thousand, forty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Grants, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. And technology fine, a hundred and fifty dollars. For a total of all bucks, two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
All against? All right, I need a motion from the left side of the table.
I made a motion, we're adjourned.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Benson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against? All right.